To me, the elephant in the room is actually a little bit different. And that's just that this is a national trend is happening in this country. That people entering the workforce don't want to be police officers. That's, that's the elephant in the room. And I'll tell you why. It's because this little thing right here called our phone. And those young folks that have been growing up with a phone attached to their hand have been seeing social media videos of people stopped at traffic stops, dealing with mental health issues and even the just obvious murder of George Floyd. That is what kids are seeing these days growing up in this country. And when they turn 18 and they enter in the workforce, they're not saying, "I want to be a police officer." That's the issue. So until we address that, I don't think any of this is going to happen. And the way we're trying to address it is by doing an unarmed model of crisis response. We're trying to get police officers off the traffic stops. These are all pilot programs. Those are the things we should be funding. And, you know, again, I support it in personnel. But like I said in personnel, we're in the third stage of grief. We're still bargaining over this issue. We'll get to depression and we'll get to acceptance in a little bit. But I will continue to say that because until we have those alternative models of responding, we're going to continue to have these issues. And so, again, this is just a report. It doesn't commit anyone to agreeing with what I think the end goal of Mr. McCaskill is. I certainly have a lot of hesitation, especially considering the genesis of how we got to the Rampart scandal was, you know, the accelerated hiring of the Olympics. So, and here we are again, right? Their history always repeats itself sometimes, right? But it's just a report. You know, I'll be supportive of it, but it does not mean that I continue to have many criticisms about our public safety system in this city. And of course, I also agree with some of the comments of my colleague to the right about just having a centralized human resources department. But anyways, but those are just my comments.
As I call your name, please come on to the left-hand side of the council chambers where our sergeants can help direct you up to the podium. Peggy Lee, you don't need to speak in the order that I call you, but please just come on up as I call you. Peggy Lee Kennedy. Angela White. Lana Rhodes. Sean Murphy. Speaker with the purported first name Duarte. A speaker with the purported first name Monique. Adam Smith. Julian Alexander. And a speaker with the purported first name Stupid, which I assume to be Mr. Herman. And a couple of fake profane racist names, which I assume to be either Mr. Herman or Mr. Spindler. So those speakers can come on up, as well as somebody supposedly named Wags. That is all the names that have signed up. And so Sergeant, those will be the only names we'll be taking right now in the chambers. Good morning.
Peggy Lee Kennedy, I am proud, so proud to stand here opposed to item 39. And I'm going to tell you why. Because you have chosen here to criminalize a whole bunch of people who are unhoused, living in vehicles, rather than create safe parking. And in your amendments--
I'm sorry, can you, let's hold her time for just a minute, just a minute. I need to ask our staff to please take your conversations outside. If you're going to be talking in this horseshoe, you need to take it outside. Because I can barely hear here. All right. Sorry, go right ahead.
Thank you. Item 39, when you were submitting the amendments, I recognized council files from the CAO reports that specifically made genuine suggestions to this council body, to this city, to create safe parking as a solution, to expand safe parking. And now the new one has completely eliminated it. What have you done about safe parking? That is a program that already exists. But instead, you want to create something that criminalizes people and gives them tickets for being places and places that you think might be--
Okay, can you move on to the next item, please? It's one minute per item, so go ahead and move on to the next item.
Well, okay, I mean, it sort of takes time when you interrupt me, too. May I say the REAP program is, appears to have some class issues here. You know, when you take code enforcement and you target only certain types of code violations and not the big fat code violators that maybe could pay for some housing with those fines, like 60 apartment building units wrongly converted to hotels, to short-term rental. That's not, they haven't done the code. And they're not paying the property tax for the short-term rental either. I'd like to go to just general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute, go ahead.
And continue my problem with agenda item 39. That, you know, these oversized laws that you're putting in and ticketing people for and forcing people to move, continually displacing people instead of creating solutions, that is not a solution. I don't understand why you have to keep doing that. And now you want to do it citywide? And what is these sensitive areas? Buy a park, green space, because you know RV people may not deserve that? That's discrimination. Everybody deserves green space and fresh air and shade. And where are you going to push these people? Well, if you're in CD 11, you're being pushed to CD 5 or to Culver City. Because every time you put in these laws and you do these sweeps, that's what you do. You displace people. And it's wrong.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Yeah, I like to speak on motherfucking items in my non-agenda public comment, pumpkin head.
Three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Of dealing with housing. Eduardo, the mayor's housing czar, should know that Torrance, California, is providing housing to any white nigger too, any dumbass juju, any homeless dumb motherfucker. In communication of the Los Angeles housing, go to Torrance, you'll receive your assistance. Thank you, Eduardo. And then we go to this shit on item 15, which I spoke about. There's no such thing as housing. I spoke to Torrance, California mayor, and I told the chink, "Hayat cha, hayat cha too."
I'm sorry, item number 15 is a REAP item, so please stick--
Sir, I'm on number 17 now, I'm on number 17 now, goddamn pumpkin head.
Item number 17 is also a REAP item, so please stick to the agenda.
I'm on 17 now, do you mind? Do you fucking mind?
Mr. Herman, you'll speak to the agenda items. 17 has to do with REAP. You can speak to REAP, not what's happening in Torrance.
No, 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 I'm talking about rent escrow asshole. The only rape you're doing is fucking the people up in CD 11 like you've been doing all your life, jackass. Number 18, moron, what the attitude? And CD 13, dick face, you understand what subject I'm on? Another housing. How much housing are we going to get to save America and bring back California to its thriving livelihood? Not! And the reason why, the physical impact statement by the chief legislative analysis knows that I and Eduardo are right. Our mayor fucked up. Then we go to number 20. Am I on topic on number 20? Another CD 13. Am I repetitious and repeating myself, pumpkin head? No, I'm not. And the reason why? Because council's action for a street banner program? Well, fuck street banner programs. You're going to put smoking scan banners on every fucking tree, every fucking pole, and every fucking cocksucker in here, because that's what you want. Banners to show that we're all dirty niggers too. Then we go to 21, pumpkin head. I'm still on subject, but fuck 21 and fuck you. I'm now into my non-agenda public comment. Justin Torrance last night, as I entertained them for two fucking hours and a half on YouTube, they got a lesson in the First Amendment, Brandon Burke versus Ohio. A dirty nigger, send the Jews back. I'm on topic, I'm talking about housing, you dirty nigger. Let me get to my point.
No, you're not, and you've been warned before. So I'm going to move you to-- Okay, so you're on general public comment, go ahead.
Shut the fuck up and let me talk about Brandon Burke. You kiki motherfucker. U.S. 395, 444, 1969, a dirty nigger interrupting me again for the second goddamn day in a row. That's a fucking stupid moron, imbecile, retard, four-eyed fat fuck from China or Korea, whatever fucking country you're from. Go back! If you don't like America, Snyder versus Phelps, you're going to hell. God hates you, homosexual fucking faggots, simplified fucking faggots. Whatever dwarf this three-inch dick is, you are a dick too.
Okay, next speaker. And as we're waiting for the next speaker, just to be clear, as long as you are following the rules in this meeting regarding public speaking, we will not interrupt you. So, good morning.
I'm Julian Alexander, founder and CEO of a Dream Foundation. I would like to speak to the available points 1, 2, 7. I would like to request the attention of our council members--
Three minutes for the items, go ahead.
10, 4, thank you. I would like to request the attention of our council members, specifically if we could make eye contact and if like the president had advised, if you want to hold conversations and/or remove yourself from the room, because we're going to, I'm going to ask for the same respect that I gave you as you saw me standing there or sitting there. In respects to 3, 2, 1, point 1 and 2 for the transportation, we've been, as an organization, working to communicate with LA City to support with the housing and the discrepancy with parking and RVs. At our local lockout, we have a coalition of artists and homeless individuals who keep a perimeter and keep things secure for our people. Because of the administration's lack of ability, unfortunately, to move and progress that forward, our lockout location, which is 1460 Nod Street, 90012, is filled now with vagrants. And these are vagrants where, in effect, all our work was wasted, okay? Point number 7, I would like to solicit as a, to be able to partner with the city and the CAO, City Administrative Officer, as it relates to the mapping of these facilities. As the director at Pico Union Housing Corporation-- Hello administrators-- under Gloria Farias, we had partnered with LA City in 2016 to develop the Pico Human Union Chamber of Commerce, where we utilize data and geospace technology to acquire the same results that you're seeking in this prerogative. And us as a third party, we can make ourselves accountable. I appreciate Ms. Eunice Hernandez, who is not respecting, again, the request of president. And she's speaking on this side, and she just shrugged her shoulders in advising because we have work to communicate, not only with her department, but Kevin De Leon, Harris Dawson, and numerous others. Moving to public comment, I'm advising that the fruits of our leadership represents what our leaders are. Kevin De Leon, why did you take a picture of me yesterday if this is being recorded? I saw you and it's recorded.
This is not on the agenda, and you've exhausted your time on item 7, so please move on to another item.
It was, can we restart? It was public comment and I lost 10 seconds.
Okay, so you have one minute for general, go ahead.
Wonderful, and I would like a formal response, Mr. Kevin De Leon, because I did submit every single council member here over the weekend, including the mayor and the city clerk, a community partnership agreement as long as multiple tiers of models. I, the only reason I'm not a firefighter, I have two broken knees. I'm wearing four knee braces, but I did it for three years. I've jumped into burning buildings.
Hold on, I'm sorry, pause this time. Mr. Herman, this is your only formal warning. You are disrupting the meeting. Yes, motions can disrupt the meeting, so do not do that again. You are distracting and disrupting everyone here.
He is not distracting me.
That's fine, Speaker.
I'm going to request up until 40 seconds, please.
Hold on, we have paused your time. So this is your only warning, Mr. Herman. Okay, Speaker, go ahead.
So I'm going to request that 40 seconds because that wasn't part of my presentation. If Mr. Kevin De Leon can talk for five minutes about traveling to Japan yesterday and we have to put up with it, I'm requesting that another 10 seconds.
So we paused your time when the disruption was going on?
The disruption was on yours, sir. Mr. President, can I have my another 30 seconds? We've been working since October, Mr. Dawson, to solicit in your team, Neighbor Southwest Neighbor Council Meeting. I talked to Mr. Germain, October 16th. Ms. Eunice Hernandez, in June--
Speaker, your time has expired?
I advised Mr. Martin, right, that it was 911 emergency--
Speaker, your time has expired? We need to move on to the next public commenter. Speaker, you've been asked politely to leave the podium. So again, this is your only warning. You are now disrupting the meeting. So please vacate the podium so we can move on to the next public speaker. Next speaker, please. Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
Yes, I will lower my voice to protect our Spanish translator, and I would like to speak on everything, please.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items, go ahead.
Start with number 15. Uh, next, item number 16, language switch.
All right, can you pause this time? Mr. Herman, you have been warned already. You are now disrupting this meeting for a second time. You are ordered removed from this meeting. It's not a threat, you just need to remove. All right, so, Mr. Herman, you have been warned twice, and now have you been ordered excluded from this meeting. So you are excluding pursuant to rule 12. Speaker, I'm sorry, just bear with us. Rule 7, rule 12, basic rules of human decency, get out. Mr. Herman, I need you to make your way towards the exit. Need to continue with public comment. And for the record, Mr. Herman is still disrupting this meeting, and we have now had to wait over a minute, and so has the speaker at the podium.
Mr. City Attorney, I have not started my general public comment, I already lost six seconds.
Correct, you still have the 54 seconds for the items.
But I have not even, that six second, I haven't started. For the next item is, for the next item is number 17. And then after 17, I will go to general public comment.
Go ahead. Speaker, you have one minute for general public comment? You start a general public comment. Start the comment time. You can't be commenting on the items. You have to switch to general public comment. Sounds like the same comments from the items. So Speaker, your time has expired? And again, just so you know, and I know we said this before, if you would like an interpreter, and this goes for anybody, if you give us some heads up, we will do our best to get an interpreter here, so thank you. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Um, number 39 and general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Please begin with the item.
All right. You don't care who I am? Good morning, Adam Smith from the LA Community Action Network. This morning, Human Rights Watch released a comprehensive report on criminalization, which among many damning stats shows that over 99% of all infraction citations are written on unhoused people in the city of LA. This city and its politicians too often claim to know that criminalization doesn't solve houselessness, yet this strategy continues to be the constant practice. Since the Grants Pass decision, citations for 4118 continue to climb. In Skid Row, those tickets have gone up over 500%. In CD 11, they have at least quadrupled. The city continues to create zones where people cannot exist, including 280 locations since 2017, restricting where RVs can be. We don't need more laws restricting where poor people can exist, whether that's in a tent or like the ordinance Councilmember Park is asking the city attorney to write. We need permanent housing like the Venice Dell Project, currently being blocked by Councilmember Park and the city attorney.
General public comment?
Criminalization and displacement and shuffling people around isn't a solution. Yesterday, at a sweep in CD 11, after council staff reportedly encouraged houseless residents to move to Cotner Avenue in CD 5, ultimately, folks were offered congregate shelter beds in South Central. Why would houseless people on the West Side be sent to CD 8, CD 9, CD 10, and beyond? Are there not houseless people in those districts? Councilmember Harris Dawson, that could use those local resources? This is a practice we've seen through inside safe operations on the West Side as well. What is the responsibility for council members to create and offer housing, or at the very least, shelter options in their own districts for their own constituents? What is the responsibility to stop blocking permanent housing opportunities like Venice Dell Project?
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
I don't know what I'm going to say. Everything is closed session and 30, was going to speak on 39, but someone else spoke on it, I can't speak on that.
39 is open, if you'd like to speak to 39.
No, I can't, because she, she spoke on it. She was, she totally--
So I'm going to give you one minute for general public comment. If there's other items you'd like to speak to, please let me know.
Uh, what about 7, is that a closed session or no?
So item number 7 is also open.
Oh, fine, okay, sorry. Item number 7.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item.
Item number 7 and general public comment.
Yes, and you have one minute for general.
God, most of these items are closed sessions. Item 7, I'm for. City Attorney, general public comment.
Okay, general public comment, you have one minute, go ahead.
Um, I'm Sean Murphy, I miss my fans. I don't think you're going to like what I'm going to predict. Depression's coming, great depression might be coming back. Crimes are still, people are still getting stabbed on the metro. We should not have the Olympics, I am against it. I hated it in 84, I'm still hating now. We should not have an Olympics. Depression might be coming back. Bob, I'm glad to see you, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the comments, next speaker. Good morning, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Thank you, Jungle Bunny. So number 15, the unelected Heather Jabba the Hutt? Yes, do you support it? Oh, of course, that's a shithole.
Thank you.
It's from the REAP program. And then another one by the unelected one. Look at this, South Mariposa Avenue, 833, no, that's a nice area. I don't know about this. Let me ask my building advisor, Kevin Lyon. Should we approve this one here, number 16? Okay, he says, okay, yes, I'll go ahead with it. Then CD 11, the evil one, Tracy Irene Park. And giving the evil one in Ramsgate Avenue. I think we better ram this one right up the asses of the city, yes. Anything named after horned animals, I support. And anything that Tracy Park does that's remotely evil, I support. Then number 18, let's see. Oh, look, he's back, CD 8, Mr. Sneakers. Yes, as you know, Blob, we have video proof that he left the chambers while his name was on the board. Let's give him a hand, that's beautiful. Yes, he wanted to be here, but then he wanted to be in two different places at the same time, Kevin. Was he receiving a bribe? But don't worry, I snitched him out to the LAPD.
What about the item?
Oh, the item's a piece of shit. Let's see here, the Department of Mental Disabilities Patients? Getting mental health, yes. And what are the three signs of mental health problems? Number one, people that sniffle and blow their nose all year round, even out of flu season. Number two, people that excessively eat during business meetings. And number three, people that don't respond to phone calls for emergencies, yes. So I think somebody here, maybe one or two, might qualify for this relief, yes. Mental health is a good thing. Remember the late Richard Alatorre, for example? Didn't he take that wonderful drug we call cocaine? Yes, you put a little bit of it on the table and you use a little needle there. No, actually, it's a razor blade. Oh, razor blade, you divide it up. See, you have to do that, Kevin.
Speaker, I can't tell which item you're speaking to, so--
Well, we're trying to, yeah, we're trying to educate people on how to get more value out of their drug purchases for their mental health.
All right, so please stick to the agenda, or I'm going to move you to general public comment.
Well, I mean, you know, you're not letting me speak, okay. Well, go ahead. So let's see here, number 19, yes. Yes, that comes from Kevin's mental mind, and we'll support it. And then, of course, number 20, for Hugo Stalin, yes. Another piece of shit.
General public comment?
Yes, so yesterday, you had a problem with language barriers. So of course, the subpoena basin is burning down because of Imelda Luisa Padilla. And remember that she won't abate a public nuisance on federal property. That could be a federal criminal statute charge. And of course, we want to honor the rich Alatorre, as he never got indicted. Because the reason he didn't get indicted was because he knew how to go to the right people. Unlike somebody we know named Price. 而我们不怪别人使用 cocaine，对吧？ 对 Amelda？当然不是。不，我们对此没有任何意见。坐在 council 上的毒品使用者，这里有着传统。所以，最后，我们想抵制 LAPD 不解决 burglaries 在 Encino，当然，抵制 pumpkin head 和 pumpkin head。
Mr. Spindler，请让 podium 空下。
我想发言，所有项目和公共评论。好的，让我们开始 20 号。20 号是一个街区标语，是 Ramper Village Neighborhood Council。不确定我们需要这个街区标语，我意思是，没有什么，我不知道 Ramper Village Neighborhood Council 的很多东西，但也许我们可以，看起来，街头标语并不是最有效的方式。你知道，你有警察合同，现在让你陷入巨额 deficit， multiple officer illegally，你知道，有，有 multiple officer 在市政府会议室，他们得到他们有利益冲突，因为他们在剥夺那些支付 salary 增加的。我们有 39 号，39 号是禁止更多 RVs，大规模 RV 禁止，这个，给 homeless 人提供 housing 和服务，你不会面临 homelessness。我意思是，是的，你得提供 housing 和服务，但为什么你不在关注这一点，而不是 criminalizing homelessness，你花了那么多时间做。所以，反对 governor 的做法，和你做的，提供 housing 和服务。就这么简单。让我们进入公共评论。好的，那么，公共评论，我想介绍一下 council 规则。我认为 Paul 是一个 refreshers，他对 council 规则，他很喜欢。嗯，让我们，让我们进去。我们有，有一个规则，是 council 规则 22，这是 council 中的生意的秩序， which clearly states that all public comment goes before any votes on any items， regardless of whether it had a hearing or not， regardless of whether it was called special or not。你按照 council 规则 22 来，不采取 multiple agenda comment 和公共评论。它显然在那上面。公共评论通常在 hearings，公共 hearings。所以你不符合 council 中的秩序。你只是在创造 arbitrary 规则，不是 council 中的规则。
所以，对于点名，你可以 During General，但是对于前三分钟，我们需要你坚持到。继续。
好的，我会在那个点名，关于你的行为非法的行为，At General，很好，好的。所以，7 号，这里你有 oversized parking，你知道，oversized vehicle parking ordinance。你知道，我记得在 campaign 和其他的事情中，我们正在寻找一种叫 do no harm 的 approach，我认为有一些 pushback，尤其是这些车辆的走向。有一个叫 safe parking，现在，也有一个叫 preferential parking district。不幸的是，这完全不合理，人们记得，当我们 advocating do no harm，Mike Bonin 在楼上，现在 Tracy Park 在 CD11 上，正在做同样的 routine， 就是把所有的 available street 都安装上，以便他们可以基本上 ticket 和 site 和应用 boot。英伦德是发明 smart boots 的伟大领袖，以最令人震惊的方式，向那些只想逃避捕获的人。谢谢 license plate readers，所有疯狂的 lunatics，你知道，Corian 和 John Lee 和 Bob Blumenfield，都拿着 progressive 的标志，大摇大摆地为固定住邻居，保护邻居。所以，发生了。现在，关于 Paralympic Games 和 Olympic Games 和工作组，这是历史中的一个伟大的事件。
主席，这不是 agenda，所以，再次，你可以 During General。
12，你说了 12是 agenda，先生。
不，我，项目开放的是 1和 2，7 是修改的，55 到 21，还有 39。
好的，你能给我时间，让我教授关于。
再次，这不是主题，你可以 During General 如果你喜欢。
让我回到问题。我要回到问题，好的。而我允许发表关于，今天，有三个不同的项目，总共涉及 $4 万的 settlement payout，对于 various retaliation。
所以， closed session 的项目不是 open for public comment，public comment 已经 exhaust 了。
直到我们到 general，好的，让我，让我做这个，让我把它们移到 general，然后我会提到 REAP 项目，以及指出什么是令人震惊的事情，就是把一个充满项目，人们不想谈论的东西，真的。现在，嗯，谈到 agenda 上的 available，你有 16个 closed session。
公共评论，你有一个问题，继续。
虽然 Blumenfield 做得很好，说，我们基本上同意，根据市政当局的建议，那真的很难。而它涉及到一个很大的问题，我将在我的 Pulitzer Prize 赢得的论文中解释，关于 committee exemption，因为，最后，你必须说，你只是在经营一个腐败的商店，你试图掩盖那些你不想让公众看到的东西，但我们看到了。因为我们有那些知道如何看到它，谈论它，和写作它的人，你可以找到我的文章，在 City Watch LA，如果你感兴趣。但是你真的需要做的是清理你的 act。
所有的公共评论。好的，我会先介绍 REAP，rent escrow account 程序。我觉得，我已经说了很多次，但是这些都是经常性的 agenda 项目。所以，7 和 39， respectively，Both deal with RV parking。而有，就像议员 Ramon 之前说的，城市拥挤，议员 Ramon 觉得我们有很多空地。而且，即使有很多 empty lot，被管理并保持空的，出于 liability 用途，例如，在所有的旧 abandoned 99 店，Roscoe 和 Van Nuys 南街，有一栋巨大的房子，离 Walmart 靠近，以前是 Montgomery 座，Montgomery 座很久没开业。但是，仍然有写有 faded Montgomery 座和巨大的空地，租售和出租，用于好莱坞制作的 studio parking。有这么多空间，我们可以利用来建造房屋，或者把人们可以 comfortably 生活的地方放在这些 RVs 上，比如，不在我家的脏乱的 RV park，比如 Tim McCoster，他赢得了，和 landlord 上去 chambers，给了他 what fur，他说你不能让 tenants 在这些糟糕的情况下生活。好，但是我们可以创造舒适的地方，让人们有 RVs，他们想住在他们的 RVs 上，这样会实现 sustainable，有漂亮的设施，让他们可以泊车 RVs，他们可以有，比如， locker rooms 和洗澡和 recreation 和 communal areas。这些是古老的，古老的概念，我们可以利用空地，议员 Ramon 喜欢用它作为掩饰 workers 和 tenants 的担忧，我们表达我们的担忧，我们应该利用空地，而我们可能在做的是给这些 RVs 一个地方。
公共评论，继续。
大家，Smokin' Stan 和 Brock Landers 和 Jason 和我的 wonderful friends，Andrew 和 Camille 和我的 wonderful husband Christopher，我爱你们，我明天见。
但是，再次，市政府，你在这个区域失败了，我必须给 Mr. Padilla 的祝贺，她的区域真的改善了，12 区，Mr. Lee 改善了，所以如果我们能帮助这座城市，我们可以 house 人们，我们可以处理这些问题。但是 Mr. Soto，当你告诉世界，正义还没有达到，当你做忠诚誓言，为什么不能？
听到我吗？
是的，我们可以听到你，你想发言的项目是什么？
我想发言，所有 available 项目和公共评论，谢谢。关于 REAP 项目，呃，真的很遗憾， contracts 不意味着 anything，我，我听到很多老人们关于 social contract，就是 something that does not exist，REAP 包含一些， contracts that do exist，人们的 lease 到他们的房子，他们住在哪里，他们住在哪里， however you want to put it，他们的 residence， 而且，你会认为这些都是 very important，所以 contract 包含 such an important commodity 会是 ironclad， neither side 会破裂。而且，这里我们有一个计划， designed to incentivize landlords to breach their contracts，因为他们甚至都不会收到一巴掌。而且，他们就，他们的钱会被 timeout，直到他们能够违反合同， which is，这听起来很疯狂，所以这是 bullshit，fuck REAP，和，和你们这群人，因为如此，它是一个 revolutionary idea。它不是 even piecemeal，它不是 even platitude，它不是 even crumbs，它是一个 goddamn fucking travesty，和你将在地狱里发誓。嗯，还有什么我们有？ 哦，RV parking，我相信，39，对，是 available for comment 还是不？
是的，是的，继续。
谢谢，市政律师，我觉得你做得很好。所以，我们有很大量的空地，在 LA，LA 被很多人称为，big 是其中一个，和你通常听到很多人说，我们大家都在 everywhere，这是真的，虽然我们有密集的 population，但我们有很多 industrial space 和 office space 开放开阔。而停车场，就像一个美丽的人刚才说的，被 liability 用途控制，我们 literally 有 police 和 private security 守护空地，和 people for parking in public spaces，他们没有地方去，因为你会不得不为城市的房价而付出任何努力。因为有些人认为它是个 eyesore，你知道我认为它是个 eyesore，这些他妈的晦气， tasteless， god awful， gaudy McMansions，that keep being popped up through the fucking neighborhoods all across the city， 而且， somehow，我们，我们，我们需要空间，for，for affordable housing，and what are we going to do，all this stuff，and yet more McMansions every day，and we're ticketing people who have nowhere to go，because we don't like the way the RV looks。那些也是 homeowners，你可以，你可以 branding 一个 recreational vehicle，因为某一天，美国有一个 vacation，人们会旅行全国， regular families 在那些东西，我们不再生活在那个世界，那些是人们的家，你现在需要变得有活力。
公共评论。
认识今天的现实。公共评论。Candido 做了一个预测，去年，关于一个地震，会在市政议会发生，和昨天，我听了一位 geologist，或者 whatever the fuck they're called， 讲述这些最近的地震，发生在一条非常危险的 fault line，我想它叫做，呃，La Fuentes Fault Line，和那 shit 跑向 downtown LA， 呃，Hugo，我想知道 Hugo Soto Martinez 拿了我的妻子昨天晚上在 public comment 上拍了照片，她是在公共评论中。呃，我觉得你们很奇怪，你们做这个 shit，和我可能会试着找出一种办法，我可以把那个 shit 掉到你的手机。嗯，你是一个很悲伤的 excuse， whatever 你叫自己，你不是 leftist，你是 capitalist，穿着非常薄的 sheep's clothing，和你是一个 pandeho times a thousand。这真的很悲伤。And Yunissi，你，你很愚蠢，And Nithya，我的妻子， everything 需要说的，你，你是一个他妈的垃圾。
Caller，您的时间已过时。
Lydia Fonseca，对于 39 和公共评论。谢谢，嗯，你知道，这个情感上的，精神上的折磨，它需要通过这个过程，它不是 democracy，它是一个 demokery，尤其是这个 election 出来，我们 somehow 被称为 City of Angels， 而39 号触及和放大它，如此，以至于我们在这里，失去我们的头脑和精神，与这些 agendas 和这些 minutes 和这些你们投票的那些东西，不代表人们，因为我们有 elderly 死亡，25% 的 population 在街上死的都是 elders，他们是 senior citizens。而，有我们很多，我们更接近这个年龄，人们声称，社区声称他们是 elders，和非常多地称呼他们为 elders，很多人是 elders，他们是 stumpy 人，他们认为他们知道，你知道，什么是 right，他们知道 everything。是的，和在高尔夫球场上说话，就是砸窗户，举起 RVs，就这样。而，而我必须谈论 breakdancing，我是 anti-Olympics，和加盐，我们没有 2028 2028 breakdancing， 而在 major cities 大多数的培养和成长，和 racial，social 和 economic classism 和 racism，这是侮辱，但这是 further injury，当我们没有 breakdancing 在 schedule 上，我们有 squash。什么 squash？我没有 idea what that is，however，我们将会发起抗议，我们将将将我们带回，breakdancing 属于我们街道，它属于我们的社区，它属于我们的 community，它属于我们的 future 和 seven generations。但是当它说到它，我们会闪耀，the Olympics on a side event，因为我们知道 $10 万的捐赠，是 city of angels 的更重要。
Caller，您的时间已过时。
谢谢 county member Blumenfield，和同事们，我今天在 opposition。I rise today in opposition to these amendments, and I ask for your no vote on these. These amendments were already voted down in committee, and I just wanted to publicly share the reasons for my no vote in committee and why I'm asking for your no vote again today. Much of what is called for in this amendment is needlessly duplicative of work that has been done by multiple city departments. It's needlessly duplicative of multiple existing programs and processes, including the mayor's own RV program, the CAOs, the protocols established by our Transportation Commission, and others. Colleagues, the crisis in front of us today is urgent. The last thing we need is another committee, another commission, or another task force over multiple years to tell us what we already know, that those RVs are unsafe and unsanitary and causing irreparable harm in communities across our city. And it's going to conclude that we need to provide services and housing to those who are residing in them. This has been studied ad nauseam and has been reported on ad nauseam. Our own internal teams are already stretched too thin. And if anyone's paying attention to what's going on around the state of California, there is a floodgate about to open right here in the city of Los Angeles. We are six weeks post Grants Pass, and we haven't adjusted a single policy in the city of Los Angeles to account for what other communities in California and beyond are doing in response to Grants Pass or what's being done in response to the governor's recent order. This is also needlessly duplicative of another item pending before us today, my motion, item 39, which already calls for a council district by council district framework to identify where RVs can park with access to services while giving us the urgent flexibility that we need to address these encampments around sensitive use sites like schools, parks, libraries, and other facilities where we know these harms are extreme. So, again, I ask for your no vote on the amendment on 7A. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Hernandez.
Thank you, Council President. And what I'd like to say is I don't think that these amendments are duplicative. If we had this information that the councilwoman talks about, we wouldn't be having this conversation of what to do again with these RVs. We need to have a holistic conversation that brings in folks who have been doing this work for a long time so we can get stuff across the finish line. Because, like I said, in Transportation Committee, we keep doing the same things over and over again and expecting different results. We keep responding to harm after it happens. We keep responding to the RVs after. This will help us get more information so we can do it more holistically. So, I'm just asking for more information, that's all. Because CD1 is a district that has seen that these signs to prevent RVs from parking is not working in our district, but we're getting an inflow of RVs from other districts who are putting up these signs. So, I think for equity purposes, for distribution of resources, it's good that we all get on the same page on how we should move forward as a city.
Thank you. Ms. Hernandez, totally understand, and that has been part of the challenges that I know everybody's kind of working to address. And I know that H&amp;H, we are going to be having another deep conversation about expansion of the RV program that I've, you know, managed to pilot in my district so that we can expand this citywide. However, I do want to say with respect to your amendment is that creating a task force is going to, it creates another Brown Act body that then creates a whole nother level of kind of procedural and, you know, other challenging issues that I think we're all intending to get to the same place, but it's just for that reason that I can't support the amendment because I think a task force is not going to be the most prudent way for us to actually get there. And so, for that, I cannot be supportive. But for my part, and I think for many of us, we share the challenges and the frustrations around the inequities about how resources have currently been deployed with respect to efforts around RV encampments. It's, I think, why so many of us had to independently kind of create procedurally ways of us managing that, and that's unfortunate, but that's born out of the fact that resources has just, frankly, blatantly not been equitably distributed. And we know that's to be the case. That being said, I think we're also on the precipice of having a formalized procedural way for us to go forward consistently across the city. So, it's just for that reason I cannot support your amendment at this time.
I was going to say nothing, but Ms. Park had mentioned, obviously, that the amendments were discussed and heavily debated in committee and as a result of the vote were actually voted down. So, this is a second bite at the apple with the full council. I can appreciate the concern with regards to oversized vehicles, but I do know in many neighborhoods, especially communities of color, black and brown neighborhoods, in particular, Bull Heights, primarily Latino neighborhood, a lot of folks have been speaking to the issue of the RVs. RVs have been much more vexing. They've been much more challenging, no question about it. Dealing with encampments actually is easier than dealing with RVs. When we offer housing to folks who are living in the RVs, the ratio is not as positive as encampments. The vast majority have said no, or they simply just drive off. They go park somewhere else. So, we do need a comprehensive strategy as it relates to RVs, but the one thing underlying is a task force is not going to help. We have so many task forces already. We have so many outside organizations and reports, so many layers of bureaucracy. The only thing that we can do is, we often hear this phrase, you know, we hear this all this time, is we must lead first with services. We must lead first with services. To this day, Mr. President, as well as colleagues, I don't know what services means. I still don't know what services means because I know it's not psychotherapeutic services because no mental health services are being offered to one of the house neighbors living on the streets. I know it's not drug counseling to reduce harm reduction because there's no drug rehab counselors or specials showing up to communities and offering those types of services. Services oftentimes is showing up, introducing yourself, and offering a bottle of water. That's what services means. Services don't pay the rent. Ultimately, at the end of the day, they don't feed anyone, and services do not provide a roof to put over people's heads. Ultimately, at the end of the day, to deal with these types of dwellings, you have to create the housing. In this case, as folks know, I create tiny homes, less expensive, dealing with city property, so would have to deal with real estate acquisition costs, and it's fairly inexpensive, and we can do it quickly. You have to offer the housing because if you're not building the housing, what's the solution? We're creating this mired, complex system, which already exists, and adding more to it. And the only thing I'll say finally is that we have to build the housing in our respective districts to deal with these issues. If we're not, then we're just talking about this issue ad nauseam and doing nothing about the issue.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, Council President. And I hope you all can take a moment to read the amendment to see the language in it. You know, RVs aren't really allowed in safe parking. They don't fit in safe parking, so that's why we want to include an assessment of that and have questions around that. And I want, and I'm going to talk to you a little bit about why I chose the language task force. Sitting in Transportation Committee, we got a phenomenal presentation from the coalition that's working to bring in other entities and agencies to be our traffic enforcement, removing law enforcement from that work, from those interactions with community. That working group, that coalition, was an open space for community to join the city family, to have these conversations of what are the different mechanisms and tools that the city can lean on and community can lean on to make traffic stops safer for everybody, both law enforcement and community. And that's what I'm trying to mirror here, is an open and accessible process where community and the city family can work together to find a solution and develop strong recommendations for how we move forward together. In the same meeting that we talked about this in transport, there was a motion that was put forth to tow all vehicles that are parked in certain areas, including RVs. And so, that's why I think we need to move in, try to move in a way where we can have holistic conversations because we're still piecemealing it. As we're having this conversation, there's still motions that are piecemealing it. We give out citations for these RVs, and we don't even collect half of the amount of those citations. We don't have enough staff to collect those citations. There's a lot of issues around citing these vehicles and getting them towed. We cannot wait for these piecemealed policies to get us out of these crises. And so, that's why I'm moving this forward. That's why specifically it was a task force to create a process similar to what had happened in Transport Committee because that process was one that I think we should all mirror of inclusivity, community at the table with city family to find these solutions. So, it's not about creating more work. It's about creating holistic work that as a city we can move forward because piecemealing this is not working. We don't have enough garages for these RVs. Literally, if you look at the transportation report, you can see we're not getting our bank for our buck in the enforcement of this. So, we do need to assess safe parking all throughout our districts together because if not, some of us are going to keep taking the hits harder than others. And right now, I can tell you that in Lincoln Heights, predominantly Latino neighborhood, that's taking a hit. Glassell Park is taking a hit. We are trying to build the housing. It's not happening quick enough, but piecemealing this is not working. And so, that's why I want a holistic vision because at the same motion, the same meeting, we had different motions trying to piecemeal this issue. Thank you.
So, Councilmember Hernandez, I want to applaud you for trying to get your arms around this issue. It's an issue that many of us have been grappling with for a very, very long time. Councilmember Rodriguez has had a program that works in her district. I have a program that has worked in my district in getting people housed and also ensuring that neighborhoods are kept safer. Many of us have been doing this work, and that's why I think the underlying motion that you have, that's item seven, that was approved by the committee, it makes good sense to move forward with the report backs that that includes. I think that respectfully, I'm going to oppose the motion to amend because I think it doesn't create the urgency that we need. And creating an additional task force and waiting for a report back on the creation of the task force and so on, maybe that's a separate track that we can adopt, but I think we should move forward on item number seven right now. And so, in respect of the committee's process in creating that report for us, I would ask that we treat item 7A, if we are going to move forward with what's suggested in that separately, not as an amendment here, so I'd ask that we vote no on the motion to amend and that we support the underlying recommendation of the T Committee to approve Councilmember Hernandez's original motion. So, with that, members, this is a two-vote process. The first vote is whether to accept item 7A as an amendment. That is now before us. So, on that item, Councilmember Hernandez is asking for an I vote. Councilmember Park is asking for a no vote. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Four ayes, ten noes.
All right. So, that brings us then to the Transportation Committee's report on item number seven without the amendment. That item is now before us. I see no members wishing to be heard, so let's open the roll on that item. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, each of us has struggled with the profound challenges that RV encampments bring to our streets and local neighborhoods. Each of us has also heard from countless constituents whose patience has run thin. They are tired of the status quo and they want something done now to address the proliferation of RVs. My district, where this problem was allowed to fester for many years without action, is a microcosm of the problem. RVs that stay put for weeks, months, and years without moving, taking up critical parking, blocking safe passage, and devastating local businesses, frequent fires, risking lives, infrastructure, and putting first responders in harm's way, rampant narcotics, stolen goods, and human trafficking, sidewalks and storm drains serving as de facto RV septic tanks causing devastating impacts to our waterways and environment, children having to walk around dangerous vehicles just to get to school, and instances of van lords profiting off of the unhoused with unsafe and unsanitary vehicles. Our city streets were never designed for long-term street camping. Our city is not an RV park, and we can't and shouldn't put up with the widespread impacts these RV encampments cause. That's why I introduced the motion before us, calling for the creation of a citywide program that restricts oversized vehicle dwelling around our most sensitive uses like residences, schools, parks, libraries, commercial corridors, and other places where those impacts are significant, all while identifying available suitable locations in each council district where individuals can park and access services. It is well past time that we start taking the actions and fulfilling what our neighbors and our neighborhoods need and expect and are demanding of us. I urge your I vote. Thank you.
Colleagues, today I cast a yes vote in favor of this motion, but let me be clear, this is not an endorsement of the restrictions it proposes because we don't even have enough staff to enforce it, and I don't believe it'll work. But as a commitment to gathering the necessary data to address the complex issue of oversized vehicle dwellings in our city, as we consider the implications of the proposed restrictions, I hope that we can remain conscious that RVs are not just vehicles and not just where, you know, there's criminal activity sometimes, but they're homes for many people who have been marginalized. These people are families. We literally had a family whose RV was taken in our district during a cleanup that we were not aware that it was going to happen, so we had to do a lot of work to try to rehouse that family. You know, these people are families, veterans, and working-class individuals who have been forced to find refuge wherever they can. They are real people who face uncertainty, uncertainty, health risks, and the constant threat of being displaced without nowhere to go but yet another street somewhere else. We must meet people where they are and create care-first policies in the future. To move forward, we must explore all locations where RVs could be permitted and follow through with the wraparound services and resources outlined in the motion. Let me be clear, just as we cannot criminalize people into housing that doesn't exist, we cannot restrict our way out of the matter before us. There's been many restrictions that have tried. I hope the report back from this motion serves as a tool to create care-first policies and policies that actually make a dent in this issue surrounding RV homelessness. We must have a deeper understanding of the full scope of this matter, and for these reasons, I am voting yes. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Council President. You know, very similar to a vote we had previously by Councilmember McCosker, this is just a report. It's going to give us some recommendations, and so I'll be voting in favor of it. But, you know, the report is going to come out, and I look forward to seeing how that is presented to this body. But what I suspect is going to happen is, which has traditionally happened, is that poor, working-class neighborhoods are going to be asked again to bear the brunt of this crisis. I don't think the recommendation is going to come and say, "Let's put them in the most affluent parts of the city." I think it's going to divide this council. I think we've tried to have a citywide approach many times on different issues. It has, as far as I know, hasn't worked yet. And I do think that it will highlight, I think, some of the more unique challenges that are presented with RVs or vehicle dwellings, is that these dwellings have a higher propensity to be families, and it has a higher propensity to have children into them. And it has a higher propensity of people that are already working. They're just too poor to actually have an apartment. And so, I look forward to this report. I look forward to the discussion, but I just want to make it very clear that I will never accept a policy that just pushes people from one part of the city to the other. That's why I continue to vote no against any OVO motions that come forward in this council. And I will not accept anything that puts the responsibility and the onus on those working-class poor neighborhoods to take this issue head on. And so, I look forward to the report, but I will have a very strong opinion when that does come forward again. Thank you so much.